Let's meeting in order. Cheryl, would you call the roll please?
Bill Livingston?
Here.
Tim Naan. Richard Decelua?
Here.
Joseph Cowley?
Here.
Nina Petrasalas?
Yeah.
Larry Lennon?
Here.
Justine Simmerooley?
Here.
Lori Collins in the office.
Okay. Minutes from the April 29th meeting, regular meeting was submitted. Take a motion regarding the minutes?
As I would.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, any comments, corrections? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay. Old business. Site plan review for 131 Washington Avenue pet crematorium. In our packets, there was a letter with some additional information. Does anybody have any questions? Questions, concerns? I was referring to the engineer's letter dated May 20th. The follow-up regarding the motion was tabled. According to the engineer's report, there still needs to be some information submitted to the borough. Some information regarding potential lighting, potential landscaping plan. And final sealed plan should be provided prior to building permit.
Maybe it might be appropriate to just have the engineer go through the title of the letter and perhaps the applicant representative.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Kevin Brett, I'm one of the principals of the Smith Solar Engineering. With me tonight too, Sean Windrode in the first row, time to time, you'll see him at the meetings as well.
Okay.
We did have, did receive the plans on Friday, we did complete our review. The applicant has added the lights that was requested at the last meeting under the building. We just wanted to make sure, planning commission had that as a condition that they were acceptable. They do appear to match the ones that's in the area. So I think they, when they get to the building permit, just check that and make sure that it does match what you wanted. The second item was landscape plan, they do call out now that they're going to have landscaping again as a condition of the building permit. It's two small areas, have them actually cement the building permit, what they're going to do in those two areas. And then the plan will be marked draft again for the building permit. That condition would be just that they, prior to issuing the building permit, you received the actual stamp and seal. Other than those three items, I do believe it's okay to recommend.
Okay. And we were very vague with the landscape, which is one of those things. Sir, if you would identify yourself.
I'm John Rattany, I'm the one that sent that letter feedback today. It appears to me that the conditional use was granted to a piece of property that never was secured as a commercial piece of property, it's a residence. So dwelling cannot be converted to a commercial property by conditional use, it has to go through the regular application process with regards to parking, with regards to storm or runoff, with regards to ADA compliance. I mean, to start moving forward with converting this into a crematorium without first converting it into a commercial piece of property seems kind of hurt for a horse, don't you think?
Well, it's in a mixed use.
It doesn't have, but I agree, but the building itself is listed as a residence, even though, like my office is two doors down, I bought it as a residence, I had to go through a big process to get my building converted to a commercial property where I could move my office into.
Let me address that from a legal standpoint. And I know your letter does refer to the Allegheny County Assessment Page website and designation of that as a residence. That's not a zoning designation, that's only a tax designation for county tax purposes. That property is within a commercially zoned zoning district. It is already zoned to be allowed to have this use. Secondly, it has received conditional use approval in order to have that use occur on this property. Now later in, actually one step beyond the conditional use approval, it says you may do this activity to the next point we're at now, which is the land development plan. That's the, the conditional use is a zoning ordinance concept, that tells you where and whether you're allowed to do something. Once you have that approval, and you have the face also on the zoning map that says you can do it there, and the conditional use approval, then the site plan, the land development approval tells you how you put that puzzle together on the site, not the building, just the site. This process tonight is about proving the site plan for, to enable the site to accommodate the building and the business. Now, one step further, there are UCC, building code level things that happen post-approval. We as a council, the planning commission of council, they approved the land development plan. When they go to get building permits, if it's necessary under the building permit laws in order for them to do certain things such as ADA accommodation, entrance, ingress, egress, et cetera, that's the component of the building level. Parking is handled at a site plan level.
So if I might consider your point, I need to implement a higher process to convert my office into a commercial piece of property, and it's listed on the county website as a commercial piece of property. My taxes are 50% higher than 131 Washington Avenue because, I was told, because it's a residence, it's not a commercial piece of property. That in itself has a certain inequality to it. How can we be assured, and I'm telling you, that in the town, park, and city, it's a issue. And so how can we be assured that all of these issues that go around converting a home into an office and then into a crematorium, I just think that we're engaged in a process right now. This is part of, this is part of that process where probably step three or four steps, designing ordinance allows it, the conditional use approval allows them to do it on a specific property. This present engagement, this commission is doing this site plan, exactly what you're talking about, do they have the parking, do they have the lighting, et cetera, et cetera, for the land to accommodate the business. Then, after that's approved, the applicant can then go, he gets his building permits, and any necessary conversions, things in the building itself that would be necessary for it to be commercial, they will have to do that as part of the permitting process. On the tax end of it, once that building as a fact is converted to a business enterprise, if you turn on this assessment page next year, you will see that R changed to a C, and the taxing bodies will evaluate it accordingly, it's kind of. If I understand you correctly then, you're saying that we will have an opportunity to sit in this room again and discuss that?
No, I did not say that.
The installation of that crematorium?
No. I'm sorry, the what of the crematorium?
You're saying that the next thing is they're going to come up with some drawings, and then that's going to be assessed again?
No, no, sorry.
So you're saying this is.
Let me clarify. The council, the borough council, the planning commission and the council, we approve conditional use zoning applications and we approve the land development, the site plan itself. Once that occurs, it becomes then administrative after that. They go over to the permitting office and deal with, well, we have a third-party provider that does our code permitting for us under the state law, the UCC. And they will vet those plans, if there's building plans, we're not engaged in the building itself, we're engaged in everything that we're here. Once that's all proved, and they get their ticket, so to speak, for that, then they go over to the permit window, and that's where they get engaged in the building permit process. So no, it's not a public process in terms of, now, anybody, when you get a building permit, you post the notice in your window. If somebody is an interested party and they wish to go and look at that, dispute it, appeal it, there are means for folks to do that, but not here. But here, you are certainly welcome, and that's what we're engaged in tonight, the process of vetting the site plan and to determine whether it conforms to the requirements of our land development ordinance, and for example, I assume it meets the parking requirement.
Yeah. Sorry, is that site plan available time for us to look at?
I assume it is.
Yes.
Yes, and it's been available, publicly available, in the offices since it's been filed.
Yeah, that's been updated, supposedly to be updated.
Now, they do, it's part of the natural process, the comments are made, feedback's given to the applicant, need to add this because it doesn't meet the ordinance, they add it, and they follow the wise plan and tweaks it, so to speak. And Mr. Brett has commented, I believe, on their initial plan, and I think they've done some revisions and will owe us some grievances for lighting, the landscaping, et cetera.
Okay, so if I believe there were irregularities in this process, my next step is to file an appeal to the zoning board under Part 14, is that correct?
No. If you believe that the land development plan, now remember, the planning commission isn't recommending buy, this goes to the council, borough council. The borough council approves it with or without conditions, and one feels aggrieved by that, then their remedy is to file an appeal, a land use appeal in the common police court in the Allegheny County, not the zoning board.
Sir?
Zoning boards deal with variances and things of that nature, they don't deal with appeals from council.
Well, under the area of jurisdiction, it seems like, it's my understanding, the zoning board can render a decision based on a decision made by the.
Again, which is fact. They don't have jurisdiction over this sort of matter.
Brett?
Yes.
Okay. Well, so I'm not really sure where to go. I was hoping that by identifying this as a residence that was being converted to a commercial property without due diligence, I have to tell you that there were several irregularities that were done. One is there wasn't proper notice presented on the building, and that's an issue. I never had an opportunity to see that. My office is next door, I literally walk past that building every day, I can tell you there was never a posting on that building. I had no way of knowing.
For this application, I'm going to interrupt.
What's that?
For this application.
We have a condition on this application, that's correct.
That, I have no personal knowledge of.
But you feel I have to write that, please, you're writing that?
Yeah.
Okay.
We will, I will, I assume, and we do in normal course, and normally would be, and we will document it, whether that file was posted, we're at conditional use here. If it was not, and you had no notice of it, and it didn't appear, maybe you have a remedy, you would have to.
How do I do that?
You would have to see council on it.
Okay. And then also, the drawings that were submitted as part of the application?
This application or the conditional use?
The conditional use application. I don't know why they're application we got.
Well, the conditional use was already approved, I guess a couple months or so ago.
February.
February. This is a new application, and the conditional use, so I'm sorry to be spouting on about zoning and MPC stuff, the state law kind of governs all. And I know some of it's confusing as far as what's in the board, what's here, what's resident and all that. The conditional use was approved in February, that's a zoning ordinance approval. Then, they get out another book, it's called the subdivision of land development ordinance, then they file a new application. That's, see, the zoning conditional use says, yes, you can do it. This application is a land use development site plan application. This is how you have to put the puzzle together, so to speak, of the land in order to support the business that you wish to put on there. Okay? So this is a separate application, they were given permission by that approval to file this application, but this is a new application.
So are you saying I do have an opportunity to have an opinion on this, or just I don't have?
You have, this tonight is the occasion to talk about, make any comments on, knowing on whether they're allowed to have a crematorium, because they've got that approval.
Right.
And if you wish to appeal that or pursue legal rights on it, you can see council on that. With regard to the site plan, the land development application before us tonight, certainly this is actually the time for any comments that you have about that application.
And this gentleman here is the engineer, the same one?
Mr. Brett is the, Lieutenant Smith is the appointed engineer for the borough, and he handles the land development matters along with his colleague Sean Windrode. The processes, the applications go through administration, then they're referred to the engineers for review, then they're referred to the planning commission, and most of all, they rely on the engineers' reviews and the legal review and make the recommendations, then it goes on to the borough council.
Therefore, I can ask Mr. Brett some question?
You may address questions at council, but take that to the chair.
On the drawing that was originally submitted with the application for conditional use, there was a pad shown, pad would suggest it's a slab of concrete. Okay, the pad is shown, it's 18 feet on the drawing, however, if you take a scale to it, it's only 12 feet. So my point is, is they're misrepresenting the encouragement on the parking lot because the pad is smaller than the dimensioning on the pad. That leaves you with less than three parking spaces. Okay? The second thing with regards to the pad, is that to suggest that we're going to put an oven on a slab of concrete and the kids can walk by and watch and look at these dogs? I mean, is this what we're doing, is there going to be a building there? If there's a building there, then I would, based on the code, they were supposed to tell you there was going to be a building there. And I believe that your conditional use approval would have been impacted by the fact that they're going to put a building on the back of this building, put this oven in, which would then encourage you on parking. And there's so many irregularities in this application, I really think we need to reset this, and we need to bring people that live in that community down here to have a say in how this is going. This thing is just off the rails right now, is what I'm trying to say.
We can, and I, based on your comment, not, the pad we may be looking at on paper may not be the existing pad, maybe the proposed pad that the engineers discussed. Certainly, please, we can verify in the field whether things are accurate or not, and that can, that can be done. I don't think we're suggesting somebody's going to be going crematoria outside.
Well, I know, but why wouldn't that have been presented on the application? That was a misrepresentation of that application. It's a required.
Maybe a misunderstanding what the scope of the application is when you're dealing with the, please, if I might. When you're dealing with the generic question of whether one can do an active pet crematorium on a site, all the nuts and bolts aren't necessary to that application, that level of detail is not necessary or required necessarily under that level of application. Then when they get their permission, generic. For example, I could have a, I'm sorry. Please finish the answer in order for folks to understand, sir. For example, if that was a vacant piece of property with no building on it whatsoever, one could come in and say, I'd like permission to do a pet crematorium business on it, I'm going to start from scratch, and I have the land, this is my concept, maybe you do not have to have the level of detail that you would have in what we have today with that plan. So it may be that they didn't need that level.
But if I was going to build on that piece of property, like you suggest, if I'm going to say, I'm just going to put a slab of concrete on a piece of property and make it part one, and then I decide to build on top of that slab, I would think that that's an material difference. The application process that is implied in the zoning ordinance says that it is expected of the applicant to give the details with regards to what will be constructed, what additional buildings will be on that property. There's an outright detail of information that is expected to be provided to your commission before you can render a conditional use decision, which was omitted in that application. And I feel your decisions, the decision of this panel was misguided to the extent that you made, you're putting this community in a bad light, or in a bad situation.
Mr. Chairman, may I suggest?
Sure.
Our solicitors give the legal opinion. I think, with all due respect, Tom, I think it's time that we go to the engineer. Here, we're going to the engineer stuff now. And Tom did a good job in running the department. Now he wants to be engineer too, Tom. You know, you and I, we just.
I haven't said I am an engineer.
I know.
I've been a termary earlier, Mr. Brett.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Sir?
Point of clarification, when the conditional use came through, gateway engineers was the borough engineer that, they completed the review of that. I do have a copy of the plan in front of me, I believe. It does indicate concrete pad, and that was the information that was submitted with the conditional use. And the conditional use to get approved, as Tom said, there's a process for the conditional use. The plans that we are reviewing tonight is for land development submitted, and we reviewed that, it does show building, they do comply with the requirements of the code according to the land development submitted. So they've met their requirements, we have three comments.
The requirements of the conditional use that they were granted?
Conditional use of.
That's the fruit of a poison tree.
But, but the conditional use, as Tom explained, was approved in February, there's a process there, I'm sure Tom can explain what that is, but they went through it, they submitted, gateway engineers completed the review, it went to planning commission, it went to council, council approved it, and there's an appeal carried after that, I'm sure. And after that, the applicant followed the rules, submitted for land development, we subsequently reviewed the land development, and that's what's spread tonight. Your complaints with the conditional use, I'm pretty, I know, or, the planning commission has heard that, but you'll have to seek counsel on what's your process for appeal for that conditional use, because it's not what's before the board tonight. Tonight is land development, they have submitted, and as you indicated, they have an engineer drawing now, they've submitted and met the requirements of the borough code, so tonight they had three comments, they've addressed them, we're recommending those to be conditions of a building permit, because they're all very small items and they're actually something that will relate directly to the building permit. One being, lights on the building, there'll be a show of drawing that shows what the lights look like.
So when we're done, how many parking spaces you have?
On the plan? I think there was four.
Four. It showed, I mean, this shows.
I believe it was four.
How do you get four parking spaces?
They have an engineer plan that shows that. They show four parking spaces.
Okay, so my next step is to bring a group of people in here for the council meeting and revisit this irregularity in the process. If there was no notice provided, and opportunity to check my opinion, then it's not reasonable for you to say, well, you should have filed an appeal on a condition that I had no way of knowing that it was even taking place.
And as Tom indicated, you would have to seek counsel on what your remedy is for that. I don't believe there's anything in this plan.
So how big is the building?
I was, I was going to ask, what is the addition, what is the size of the addition on the building? Sorry, I didn't look at the site plan that was posted.
Twenty-six by twenty-four.
Is the addition?
Yes.
The building is 26 by 24?
Building addition.
And you've got four parking spaces too? Are you kidding me?
They have three parking spaces outside, one parking space inside. The ordinance requires them to have three parking spaces, it's all that it requires.
The building is 25.
If you don't mind, they are showing four. So they are, as Kevin indicated, in compliance with the ordinance requirement.
So let me get this straight. Your original drawing that was submitted, your original drawing that was submitted showed on the drawing a 12 by 22 plan.
You know, we can't.
You know, that's going to turn into a 24-foot building?
Let me just say this, you apparently aren't listening to what's being said. The drawing that was submitted is a commercial use, not a site plan drawing. It was submitted for the purpose of being permitted to proceed down the road of getting a site plan approved for the crematorium. It was approved. There was nothing that obligated, if there are different facts, what you say is true, there's a concrete pad there, there's nothing that obligated them to keep that fact.
Do you think any misrepresentation on that application is permitted? As long as you guys approve.
Yeah, I'm not saying there's any such thing.
I don't think characterized it as, I don't think that's.
And I'm not sure that is, misrepresentation.
Misrepresentation, those are your words. Well, if I draw a 12-foot pad and I put a 24-foot building in there, I would think that's kind of a misrepresentation.
I think you're, I think you're misrepresenting what's being discussed, frankly, that's what I think.
And let me just say this, they put, and again, that's a concept plan and of generic use, they don't have to, when they go ahead of the site plan, say, you know what, look at the building, make a building on there, if they're allowed to do that under the zoning ordinance, they can do that at site plan stage many times, even.
Kevin, please, would this building be other variants? Would there be a variance on this?
There's no variance involved in this. And the fact of the matter is, they could go build right now with a 12 by 24, in three years from now, they decided, hey, we want to expand a little bit, they'd have every legal right then to go do that, that's not a misrepresentation, it's just an evolution of the plan and the development.
Huh? Hey Damon, that's one for you too?
Yeah.
And I'm sure Schuster's going to be real happy that they didn't have a say in this either. This is, this is ridiculous. I've been here for 30 years, I'm in my own business, I now have a pet crematorium across the street from my apartment building, where my tenants are now talking about walking out. So, no, thanks, guys. My show, let's go.
So I do have a question, because on the April 25th letter, it did send that, it did say that on number three, adjacent property owners to the north and east have not been provided.
That just means it's not shown on that drawing, that's all it means.
Oh, okay.
That's a technical.
All right, so, okay.
Seems to me that the complaint is more on the, on the crematory situation than anything else. And I don't see absolutely nothing wrong with that. It's a site, it's beautiful, it looks very, very good. I'm in favor about this to recommend council, whatever everybody else thinks.
Is there a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Discussion.
So we've got a motion to pass this, to approve it and pass it to council?
I don't see any contingency, Mr. Chairman. We did contingency report on the lighting and landscaping, I believe that that's been notified by the people that it's being taken care of, or is going to be taken care of. That's the only contingency that I recall we have. Am I right or wrong?
Right.
Thank you.
So, motion to approve based on the contingencies indicated in the engineer's.
May 20th.
May 20th letter. Okay, it was a motion, you made the motion, second?
Second.
Second. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next on the agenda is Baldwin Street Concept Plan Discussion. Before we get to that, I've got one other couple of, couple things to cover. First, I'll provide a brief overview of the Baldwin Street Concept to make sure that everyone's on the same page for the start of the discussion. Second is to provide council members with the opportunity to give us some feedback based on the concept plan. And third is to provide time for visitors to ask questions and make comments. Baldwin Street discussion started over three years ago to discuss mitigating the flooding of the area. Planning Commission worked with a consultant who studied the complex situation and provided possible ideas to attempt to alleviate stormwater flooding issues, knowing full well that further input and planning would be required. This concept is a big picture approach to resolve the problem area. Part of this evolving process is to look at stormwater management, watershed issues, infrastructure, and environmental issues. Any concept plan that is to be approved is going to be a phased, long-term, 20, 30 years process due to budgeting, due to budget and planning constraints. There are many details yet to be worked out. Any concept that is to be ultimately approved will require much more planning, public input, and involvement with both governmental and non-governmental entities. Again, this concept plan was meant as a big picture, long-term approach. The concept includes phased acquisitions of properties of the Baldwin Street over time, providing green space for flood, stormwater retention and runoff, realignment of the Glockland Run and Bauer Hill Road. If the borough currently had the money required to do, carry out this project, which it does not, it would still be a three-year, three years going in doing additional planning to carry this out. The planning commission recommended a concept plan to the Bridgeville Borough Council last fall for review and comment. Couple of procedural things. This is a public forum, please be respectful with your comments. We want everybody to be heard, if you have any side comments to be distracting, please take them out in the lobby so we can just carry on with the comments and the discussion. so we can just carry on with the comments and the discussion.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a, a comment?
Just a little. Please direct all comments and questions to the Planning Commission up here. At this time, I would like to ask any of our planning commissioners if they have anything to add to these comments before we seek comments from the council member.
The only comment I have, and remind, that we only approved not the entire concept. We approved one, two, and three, I believe. I believe we should note that on, on these questions. The, the, the project is more than just one, phase one, phase two, and phase three.
So explain what is phase one, two, and three?
Oh, right, that's a... You got me there. No, I know, maybe it's a baby. I mean, we would have to go back.
It had to do with the planning process and funding process.
So the plan is a lot more than that.
Okay.
But we just recommend those three things.
Okay.
They come to thirty-three million dollars.
Yeah.
The entire project comes to sixty or seventy million dollars. Am I correct?
It's a default.
Yeah. So, but just not to confuse the, the council knows this very well. They, they got that, they approved one, two, and three.
Anybody else from the commission have questions, comments?
No.
Come, Mr. Council President, you.
Uh, yeah. So there are these phases that go along. And like I said, the one, the first phase, there are titles to the phases, is acquire properties. And I think one of the issues that, you know, when we first stepped on the firm was, you know, they talked about acquiring all the property on the creek side. And when you look at the plan, there's a big dotted line around basically everything. And, you know, so when you talk about this thirty-million-dollar price tag, it's obviously very expensive. Well, you're, you're acquiring twice as much property as the original plan. So that's obviously gonna inflate the cost. We're, you know, we kind of thought that, hey, we all know that you're flooding the ballon tree. And, you know, one way that you, one way to guarantee that you won't be flooded is if there's no, there's not a building to be flooded. So, you know, looking at the way the plan was set up, I think, and even talking to some people, some people have different, different opinions, but we're thinking that the properties that were to be acquired were basically on the creek side and not on the other side. You know, kind of wanted to see more of the, you know, we like the idea of the plan. I mean, it's, obviously, it's a grandiose plan, but we wanted to maintain as much of the Baldwin Street character as possible. And this is, makes, this is, no, there's nothing left of whatever is there now. And I think a lot of people are concerned about that.
Kevin, I have a question, since I'm the new guy here. And I'm looking at this environment planning and design document, this neighborhood plan and concept study and funding document. And I'm just curious, what alternatives were looked at that led up to this? Because as I understand this thing, it's basically saying, take Bauer Hill Road, move it to where Baldwin Street currently is, and create effectively a floodway, wetland, whatever you want to call it.
Green space.
Yeah, between where Baldwin Street is now and where Bauer Hill is, and I guess including Bauer Hill. And that's a huge change in traffic patterns. So obviously, the character of Baldwin Street, where it doesn't exist in the concrete side of Bauer Hill Road, that's a pretty significant change in and of itself. I'm just wondering what other alternatives were actually looked at.
There was another plan that, that did show the existence of keeping Baldwin Street and Bauer Hill.
Right. And when you say keeping Baldwin Street, would you take half of the houses?
Still, yeah, still, all the properties in between Bauer Hill and Baldwin.
So you would just take that strip of properties up against the creek?
Yes.
Mostly the south part.
And why was that discarded? I assume it was. I mean, was there a reason that that was not recommended?
I think this plan, original plan, went through approval, and then this, this second plan of the four lanes showed up after.
No, it was, it was part of, it was part of the discussion early on. And.
Bauer Hill couldn't be widened to, to four lanes.
Yeah.
It wasn't four lanes, it was two lanes.
It.
The proposal would be two lanes.
Two, two one-way streets.
Mm-hmm.
No, that wasn't the proposal. It wasn't a one-way streets.
I wouldn't, no, no.
I don't remember that.
No, it was.
Why is it necessary to move Bauer Hill Road?
There was a couple of reasons. One was to line up Bauer Hill Road here, because you have the dog lane where in front of Soul Halls and that. If you came down through the center, it wasn't to go, it was to go down through the center of the area between the creek and Baldwin Street. And basically, it was to come around PJs, go through the parking lot next to Bruce's Auto Body, and then come down to the center and line up. It was, it was trying to stop the congestion.
So it sounds like this thing morphed from a flood control study to a flood control study and a traffic plan. That's what it sounds like to me.
It, it's gone through several morphs.
Yeah. That, that wasn't part of that concept. The other part is, is the fact that the, the Bauer Hill Road, where it is now, the bed it's at, there's certain, there's sections of it are leaning in towards the creek. And the wall, the wall on the creek is not leaning. As you can see, the, from the top part's being washed out and that. And that was a concern, was to try to eliminate that problem by eliminating Bauer Hill Road and bringing the road down through the middle of the Baldwin Street area. That, it was, it, it, we were trying to get a lot of things cured by the whole project. And that's why it was a conceptual overall, the, the work for the future and the flow of traffic and that, so.
The idea to move Bauer Hill Road later, it, it, it didn't start with us. It started with this planning commission. It, it goes way, way, way back. I, I recall in the middle of fifties, late fifties, I used to come to council. And they discussed that, that plan to move Bauer Hill there, to, to move the curve there with PJs and straighten that out. Then I, I echo Bruce, what he said, to straighten up the other part. So there's a known, known idea, maybe. That one remembered this. It's, it's been, it's been thousands of years to move Bauer Hill Road. At that time, we don't even have a trouble with, with water. Now, something else has happened with that. But that's their idea. It's been on a paper for many years.
Excuse me. I'd like to comment on the stability of Bauer Hill Road. Just a minute, Paul. We've got public, time for public comment. I thought that just was it.
So it, it just, frankly, it strikes me that, I mean, we need to decide what problem we want to solve first, because I've been hearing about this traffic problem since I moved to the borough in seventy-seven. And it's not going away. And it also strikes me that a lot of what's being talked about is well beyond the capacity that borough can solve. Frankly, we don't have the wherewithal to do all those major realignments and roadway reconstructions and whatever. We might have, unless we were to get some help from PennDOT or the county or SPC or somebody who does traffic for a living, traffic, traffic improvements for a living. Well, I mean, it's, you know, we've got our borough roads that we need to take care of, and that's probably where, in my mind, that's where we should keep our focus. And the other thing is, I mean, we have this flooding issue now. I think that's something we can begin to address. When you get this mission creek thing, frankly, you end up where we are now. Thirty million dollars, we can't afford. We don't want to do next.
Right. Well, and part of this, I mean, you know, it, it started out with the creek and widening that and basically looking at everything between Baldwin Street and Bauer Hill. And, you know, realigning the, the creek and trying to do the walls and stuff. And then as that process went on, it kind of morphed into, you know, moving the roads and that.
And I, I understand how that happens. But again, I mean, thirty million bucks.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and that's why we're having this discussion and, and, you know, trying to get some feedback from, from the council and, and just trying to, you know, the, the, you guys, you know, we presented the, the, the plan to you guys and looking for some feedback. And, you know, maybe this is too much, but, you know, give us some direction.
Let me ask you a question. Is there some thought to try to leverage SPC or someone like that to come in and give us money to do these roadway improvements? Is that what the thinking is?
Yeah, well, then, we had to start somewhere. And this was part of that. And we, we talked to the different entities for money. And they said, "Well, we need some kind of plan."
You can't show up and say, "Hey, we want to do this."
So we want to get on their twelve-year program?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And not that Bauer Hill Road is a borough road that doesn't belong to the county. It's, it's.
Yeah, I understand, so.
Sadly, that's our headache.
To go to this financial, this committee, this government who has money and willing to give us some, we need plan as well as, you know, lending, you need something.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to understand where we are and where we're headed next, so. I mean, if the idea is to take this and approach SPC and say, "We've got this critical need, no way we can afford it. You need to belly up the barn, fund this for us." I get that, if that's what the plan is.
It was, it was a matter of having something in writing.
Right.
To be able to go to other entities and say, "Here's the issue. Here's what we're trying to correct." But it, you know, again, it needed, you know, there's a lot more planning, designing, work, discussion that needed to happen.
And a lot of this came out of Ivan from that time period. And then, then we had June twentieth, which enhanced the problem more and more.
No, we had the one back in two thousand and eleven.
Yeah, no, two, it was July tenth to thirteenth.
Yeah.
Was the, the next one that smacked us. And then the big one was June twentieth. So they, these are all things that are guiding what we were looking for, is to try and solve these problems, so.
How bad?
And it's not passing stone. It's something you need at least to get a start with.
How bad is Bauer Hill Road structurally?
Excuse me. I'd like to comment on that, because I've done more research on it than anybody has. Bauer Hill Road is not unstable.
We're, we're having a discussion between.
Well, include the public.
Excuse me, chair, speak, please.
You should have.
I made, I thought I made it clear that, you know, we're gonna have a discussion with the council, and then there would be time for visitors in the public to speak.
Mrs. Simoroli, she, you want to know how bad it is about you?
Right, I mean, because we have spent money over the past decade, right?
You said, you said, every time we pave it and we go underneath the engineering and testing and everything, we, we're not successful, as it means successful.
Okay.
You know, in the last, at least in the last five years, it's been bad. No matter what we do, it's been draining for a long time. A bore, test for the water, et cetera, et cetera. All that, that's down there. And, and we feel not successful.
Did your question answer?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. Um, council members, you got any other additional questions? Direction?
If I could. Larry said something that strikes me and kind of where my thought is. We have a lot to think about where this big plan's going, but you'd think we can do something about flooding now. And I agree with that. And I think that's where our efforts should be focused, moving forward, short term. So while I, I see the plan and I hear thirty million dollars and thirty years later, I think I would like to see something more focused, you know, in, for me.
That's right.
You know, in, in short-term mitigation. That's, that's my thought.
And I wonder if anything we can do with short-term mitigation that still includes, you know, not, not scrapping the plan, but move towards the plan at the same, at the same time. Can you do those things in unison? Can you acquire, can you do something on the creek side with those, you know, and so those properties aren't getting flooded at the same time? I don't know. And that's my, my concern.
The, the first task here was property acquisition. You know, if you're gonna do something there, the fact of the matter is, it's a floodway.
Right.
And you should just convert it back to what it is with nature made it into the floodway. You acquire the properties, you take those buildings down on the creek side, Baldwin Road. And that's, that fits with this plan.
And we've already, I mean, we're in the process of work. We, we did a survey with property owners in the flood plain. And several of them have submitted requests for property acquisition from FEMA. So there are, there are people that are willing to, they, we're not going after, and let that, you know, obviously, you know, I said before, we're not going after people's properties and say, "Hey, we want you out of here." But we also don't want, if, if a property goes away, someone loses out, we don't want people redeveloping on those pieces of property. So that's one of the things we're working, we're trying to work with FEMA. And if we can, if we're successful, there will be properties that'll be, that'll acquire, and that will be green space.
My suspicion is, you can, by acquiring those properties and frankly changing it into green space now, you can solve some amount of the problem that actually happens on Baldwin Street now.
Right.
The other question is, what about the rest of the areas that flood up along the Glockland Run?
Exactly.
How does any of that get, get addressed in any of this? Or are we just gonna not address that? I don't know the answer to that question. Again, I haven't been here through all those discussions, and I know that there's fairly extensive flooding now. There's a lot of culvers. There's a lot of flow that comes down from St. Clair. There's no denying that.
Well, and part of, part of this was, was, you know, we were tasked with trying to come up with some sort of long-term plan. And that's kind of where, you know, this whole, this whole thing started. I mean, obviously, after last year, there's, there's some short-term stuff that needs to be done and look at some midterm solutions. Some, you know, short-term being now to two, three years out, midterm being three to fifteen or twenty, and then some sort of long-term solution.
Yeah, I like the idea of using this to approach SPC. But again, you're just trying to get on their twelve-year plan. Their twelve-year plan isn't really a twelve-year plan.
No.
It's however long it takes them to get money and where you fit, you know, and the priorities as compared to everything else that needs to be funded. But it's a start, and I think we should try to get there. And in the interim, you may take a look at these other things that we can do that would help mitigate some of this. And it's, you know, can prove that we're earnest to these funding agencies. I mean, they always like to see somebody to, to start things, so spend a little of their own money to, to seed the project, if you will. But, and again, the other piece that I wonder about is on above this, what we've done, because there's, there's a lot of houses because there's, there's a lot of houses and businesses going up along there as well.
Well, one of the things that we're working on is the trash rack at the park to try to at least stop the debris from coming down. And the biggest problem that we had on June twentieth was the dumpsters and cars and everything else floated into the creek and blocked the, blocked the, the bridge up next to Soul Hall. Now, a month later, we had a seven inch rain event and it never crested any of the, the banks. And that was due to the fact of all the cleaning and removing debris and that that was done, so we had to clear a channel. And we've approached Upper St. Clair in regards to helping get the creek maintained upstream, but that didn't very, didn't go very far. They stand on the premise that the, the property owners are responsible and they don't have a, they don't have a stake in it. We, Mike, Mike and I attended a meeting with Gateway and that, and all three communities as far as Bethel, Upper St. Clair, and Bridgeville to try to come to some kind of, a long and run water shed committee that they could work together to, to solve, you know, all the problems. Because basically, McLaughlin Creek is their center, or their stormwater conduit that, that all their stormwater goes into that creek and it's their stormwater that's coming our direction, Bethel and Upper St. Clair. So one, and one of the things we're waiting for the plans to finalize for the trash rack, which is something to help the future to keep the garbage coming down and stopping it right at the, the borough's line and making a bypass out of the end of the ball field. So that, we are working on that part of it and we're waiting for some approvals in that this time. So it's, I agree, we have to work upstream all the way up to, to get it together. And like I said, we met, we, we were able to meet with the engineers and that. And I think Lori and them have sat down one other time since then. And we're looking forward to a couple more meetings with them to try to work out some kind of group solution to this problem.
Basically a, a McLaughlin Run regional watershed.
Yeah, I think that really needs to happen. The trash rack has probably helped with the debris, but I've looked at the flood maps, I've looked at the, the study. And those culverts here in town don't have the capacity to pass a hundred-year storm. So it's going to flood up above them no matter what on a hundred-year storm. And I think a June twentieth event frankly was something higher than a hundred-year storm.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
And the other issue that we have going here that most engineers are conversant with and, you know, we call it climate change, but basically it just means it's raining hell a lot more and it's a lot more intense and we're just in one of those cycles. And that's going to continue for some amount of time.
Yeah.
So, you know, maybe that hundred-year storm isn't really the hundred-year storm. Maybe it's actually the fifty-year storm because it happens so frequently. It's supposed to only happen every five years. Seems like it's happening every ten years anyway.
Yeah, every five, so.
So the point is, we're in that, but I think your idea of getting together, that's the only answer. I mean, there's no question that there's more, more development upstream currently than what was done when that flood study was prepared. Of course, it was updated just a couple of years ago, wasn't it? County updated that thirty-four years ago. We didn't want it. So all of those things are running at the same time. I think you need to get the cooperation of Bethel and St. Clair because there's only certain things you can do here to try to mitigate the damage within the borough. Something more has to be done to mitigate the amount of flow that comes down into the borough.
Sure.
I don't know how we get there, though.
Well, and Lori and these guys have been outreaching with them and continues to, and I think Bethel has been pretty receptive, I'd say.
Yeah, they changed their, they changed their administrator, because he would, he, he was there and he, at that time, they had used their fire department and some other public or private individuals to, to clean their share up because up to the south of the village area. But then you had the splitting between Bethel and, or Bridgeville that needs to be addressed too. And they, through that process, at least we sat down and started talking. And that was the, the best part of the whole business, so.
And I think maybe the next step too in that process conversation, and, and we've done that in North Fayet Township and out with the surrounding township side there, and I've forwarded a ordinance that is, I think it really created ordinance that allows for this exact watershed group to be created. And folks that are reticent about joining those, everything is about unanimity and, and volunteer in each project and it helps leverage grant money. Say, two out of three want to be involved. Then they, they can settle off, okay, those two will do it, then they can leverage that money. But you're right, all in the watershed area, I think we need to press to get that act of association. Frankly, we don't need Upper St. Clair's permission to knock on private entities' doors and ask them if they'd be so kind as to allow us to go back and survey the properties. And Mr. Colusse, before he passed one, put up a gate with a pre-pull or a chainsaw, we can do that sort of thing with them or without them.
So there's another issue here that just thought that occurs to me, and I'm going to do something I'm loathe doing and that's just to demonstrate my ignorance.
I just.
Short-Tiers Creek Flood Authority, I know it exists, and I know that it, it has responsibility for the actual channel itself. Does its purview extend beyond there to the extent that it could make something happen?
We've asked, we've asked our former engineers. We've got with Oakdale, when, when that event happened in, what, thirteen?
Yeah.
We, we got with our former engineers, with all the other communities, I think it was like fifteen communities, to try to include McLaughlin Run, Miller's Run, all these tributaries to Charter's Creek. Had Robinson Run, had them all included in the Charter Valley Flood Authority, and they said no.
They who?
Our former engineers.
It was, well, and they actually encouraged us to, because we couldn't do the D-word or anything big in the region unless we got that correct enough. So they actually encouraged us to get together all those groups of municipalities, put the letter together, submitted it, and the former senator, I think a congressman even tried to push it and said, no, we'll expand the jurisdiction.
So the Corps of Engineers has control over it, right?
We're, we're trying to get, we're trying to get Charter Valley Flood Authority to clean the back channel back here because that is part of their, their main channel. That's where the main creek used to flow.
Right.
And it's now the, the back channel, as they call it, but it's also the main flow from McLaughlin Run Creek into behind Universal Cyclops down through.
That's all downstream of the culverts, right?
Right.
So the problem is upstream to the culverts.
No, there, there, there is a huge problem back in there. And they need, we're, with Collier and Bridgeville and that, we're trying to get them to come in and clean some of that stuff up back in there.
I, I, it's so.
It's, it's, it's feeding, it's feeding everything back. That's why the scapering and all that's got nailed pretty good down there because that, it's debris reserve. And in thirteen, as they were saying, what's his name? He, he, matter of fact, got our army corps engineer and they cleaned the mouth right where our, McLaughlin goes into the back channel. But it alleviated because there was so much debris and everything else down there. And they came in and did that for us at that time, but it needs to be continued on down through that.
So basically, I understand what you're saying, it's backwater from that clogged channel is creating some amount of flooding here?
Yeah.
Hello. Uh, uh, last fall weekend, we, Rich Fitzgerald, he came in and it was some discussion about the bridge down by Soul Hall. County had a plan to do some repairs, superficial repairs to it. And we sort of asked him to put it on hold and see about building the bridge because that center period down there, that's one of the major problems with it. So we have our back from them of late.
Whose bridges is that? Is that ours?
Yeah.
Yeah. Hey, what's the county bridge?
County bridge.
We are really on the top of it.
Yeah. Exactly, we're on the roadway, they don't.
We're getting the top of it.
So they were trying to talk and then they still, instead of fixing something that shouldn't be there, they're putting that money in.
Said they'd get back to a, they didn't. And also those twin culverts below the bridge. We've been discussing of getting rid of, basically redesigning it somehow and there's, we're going to have to pay for all this. That's sort of the issue I have with the study is going, we're discussing it. I mean, Florida's going to have to spend some money. And it's, as I said earlier, it's on us. We can't get any help from the state, the feds, nobody. So we're basically almost screwed, we're screwed. So that's why I'm a little hesitant about guiding the disprogram. I'm worried about the people. Because the culverts got to go, there's, believe it's pending a system like that, state that's a cheap one program, like one point five percent or something like that. So if, the bridge got to be fixed, that would be a major thing, plus those culverts, they, they fill them with their.
And all that money is in this, right?
Nope, nope. It's, this is basically projects that have that responsibility.
Yeah, I mean, we've been.
Yeah, and the other thing with the bridges. The, the other thing with the bridges, not just the culvert, it's the fact that the railroad bridge goes down like five feet down instead of up. And so that is also.
It has a middle pier.
There's three things that need to be addressed there.
Okay. Um. So, the council, you want us to work on short-term, you want us to work on long-term? What's, what's your pleasure?
What's that?
We have to blend it together. Let's try to do something short-term.
I think short-term is a very important thing.
Okay, well, you know, they'll take a long-term solution plan is.
Well.
I mean, I, I mean, we're going to catch twenty-two. You know, if we don't move to long-term, you know, is there a way, like I said, and I would like to see if there's something we could do that's parallel. I mean, I don't know, what do you think, Larry? I mean, is there a way that we could look at in between McLaughlin and Bowery, I'm not saying Bowery and Baldwin, and do something with that strip there at the same time doing these other projects?
Yeah, I think there are phases that can be done. What I'm a little bit concerned about is that this, this thing is, you know, looking at this through, you know, like tunnel vision. There's all the pieces outside of this that we need to have a price tag and that's not been identified yet. And I think we need to do that. But at the same time, though, you know, I, I don't know that it would necessarily be a bad thing for council to say, yeah, we like this plan. You could even adopt it, that doesn't really mean much, you're not committed to anything.
Right.
And submit it to the funding agencies to say, look, this is phase one of a major overhaul in this whole basin that we know needs to be done, but it's, it's a two-step in the right direction, maybe get them to fund it. I mean, I think they realize.
Yeah, I mean, if we, if we had thought that plan, we're not obligated to move forward or anything.
But I think we need to know what the other pieces cost. Because when you adopt this and you go to the funding agency and say, look, we're going to call this phase one, it's thirty million dollars. Oh, by the way, there's all these other pieces and they cost this much that need to be addressed as well, but we think this is a good place to start. And in the meantime, I mean, if you can move forward with acquiring those properties on Baldwin Street and go in there and take some of that time, alleviate some of the problem.
Sure.
You know, it's a step in the right direction, but I think at the same time, we really need to turn up the heat on this idea of forming some kind of a drainage basin.
Renalization.
Or whatever you want to call it, that has some ability to influence what's going on up there and come up with some solutions. But you, you, you're going to need buy-in from, you're going to need sincere buy-in from St. Clair to make that happen. And you're going to need sincere buy-in from Bethel Park. It can't just be Bridgeville.
Awesome.
I don't know how you get that buy-in. I mean, are we even close? Is, when I said sincere buy-in, I mean, is St. Clair?
Not sincere. I mean, we, the last thing, I, I wasn't at the last thing, when I went to the, um, they got, we were working, they were, they were just getting like their, their hotspots for their, where.
Who'd you meet with?
Um, it was.
Matt Serikowski?
Yeah, yeah, it was Matt and he had a couple of other people there. Um, for, for our meeting, which is me, Bruce and Lori and, and our engineer. Um, and then Bethel Park had their engineer, a couple other people. But it was a little like, we submitted, like there was just a submit, what projects they were working on, you know, in their communities, like our trash rack and stuff like that. Um, and I haven't seen their, they haven't put together a map of like what everything.
All retention areas.
Yeah.
And what's, what's been done over the last.
I haven't seen that part yet.
Can we request, can we go back to St. Clair and request an update?
Do we have an actual ad hoc committee that's been appointed to represent the borough's interest in this matter? Is there a committee that will continue on?
Me and Bruce were the last one. I'll be more than happy to continue on if you'd like, I don't care. That's fine by me.
If you guys, I'd like to serve.
Be helpful if, yeah.
I'd like to.
Could we, I mean, more now, yeah, you're right.
I'd like to be a part of the two.
Excuse me.
But I think we need to reach out.
This is a public meeting.
I think we.
We aren't giving a public chance to talk. How do you guys want to have an executive session between the commission and the council and Adam?
This is a public meeting.
We're giving a chance to talk.
Please let the chair speak. He already explained that there is, and on the agenda, it's a time for public comment, which will occur.
Really?
Thank you.
I'll get, finish getting this wrapped up and we'll give you a few minutes, Bob, and we'll give Pat a few minutes.
Yeah, a few minutes, huh?
If we can maybe reschedule, reschedule another meeting, get a couple of takes out there.
That's fine. Sounds good.
Okay, that would be great. We, that's what we were expecting.
Do we have a document anywhere that sort of itemizes the, these things we've talked about tonight that identifies what the issues are and, you know, even something that says one dollar sign versus five dollar sign? So we have some kind of a feel for what we're up against. Anything like that put together anywhere?
No, we're in the planning stages of that, that's what this is all.
I'm going to let you have a conversation with them after.
Are you saying?
It, it, you know.
That's fine, I'm trying to.
No, if, if, if they're on the topic.
Yeah.
We're running, we're running late here and I just want to, there's other comments here.
No, I was going to get at it, but actually it'd be good for us to have a session where we kind of strategize and plan for all of our operations.
I agree.
Somebody else.
We have a question. So where does the trash rack in the Glocklin Park and then the area behind Dairy Delight sit? I mean, are those projects that are in development or?
We're actually meeting with, on the thirty-first, Bruce, a meeting with Kevin and over in Monmouth with Dairy Delight.
Okay, all right. But how about the trash rack? Where does that?
We're waiting for the permits to have been submitted and, and the permits will be approved. It's a, the permits.
Okay, all right, good.
Hopefully not someone else, but.
Okay.
Okay. Bob, give you five minutes.
I want more than five minutes.
You've got five minutes.
Yeah, well.
And then have the police officers come in and arrest them.
You had this, this.
Sure.
Excuse me, this, this discussion, too much of this is based on flawed assumptions. Matter of fact, the Department of Environmental Protection in nineteen, nineteen eighty did a study on McLaughlin Run Road, flooding problem solution. I did a study four, three years ago on it. The University of Pittsburgh students did a study on it nine months ago. And all three of those studies were the same and they differ entirely from the, whatever that, whatever that colored drawing was, if you held up, Larry. But the, that's point number one. Point number two is, planning commission has been misled about the instability of Bowery Road. I'm not blaming you guys, I don't know who gave the information, but if you drive down Bowery Road and look at the rock, the, the stone structure that's exposed on the, if you're heading west on the right, it's not soft, it's all rock. Number, this is number one. Number two. Number three, the core borings that Gateway Engineering did indicates that the area under Bowery Road is not in, stable, unstable. And last month, I made it very clear to you with photographic evidence that four or five homes above the area of Bowery Road that keeps having a paving problem, twenty of their downspouts plus seventy thousand square feet of land has been pouring the water down under the road. The concept, Bowery Road does not have to be repaired. And the serpentine design that is on the, the accepted plan does not have to be done. And incidentally, Larry, you and Mike are absolutely correct. If you think you're going to get, uh, the, the problem is, you have seven square miles of surface in Upper St. Clair and Bethel Park that funnel into three-quarter of the course of the route to Bridgeville. But all three of the studies that I just mentioned to you all said the same thing. You've got to even widen the creek bed through Bridgeville. And some of you were correct about the restrictions. The Bowery, the, the, the measurements that I took of the bridges as restrictions, the measurements that the University of Pittsburgh students took are identical. The problem is the culvert. The culvert, as you can understand, Larry, only has a per second of cubic foot flow of fourteen hundred or something like that, or, or, and the dam flow of the creek's like five thousand. You guys are on, and the, the Bowery Road, the bridge, by the way, is not the, the main problem. Everybody thinks that the Bowery Road is the main problem because that's where the debris stopped. And because of that center divider, everybody assumes that's the problem, is the culvert's got to be replaced. You're right, John and Mike, you, that's something that you've got to work on right away. And in terms of, in terms of Upper St. Clair being cooperative and Bethel Park being, we have no influence over them unless you sue them. And even if you sue them, that's not going to do any good. It was the Upper St. Clair Design Company that decided to make Bridgeville the retention, a five acre retention pond and wipe out the Bowery, or I'm sorry, the Baldwin Street business, just to, because they don't want the retention pond up in eight hundred yards north of Bridgeville and then taken on. But anyway, I just want to make one comment. The solution, in my opinion, and three other engineers that I've talked to and city planners, is. The solution, in my opinion, and three other engineers that I've talked to and city planners, is right here. If, and this pertains to the flooding problem. Until Bridgeville, Upper St. Clair and Collier, and Brett's the engineer for Collier as well, until you guys get together and put together a comprehensive plan like this to solve the regional traffic congestion problem, you're going anywhere. Parts of the solution to the Baldwin Street flooding, which is right here, and you were talking about the two one-way couple or something, part of it is getting a ramp built from the, from the Baldwin Street Bridge, eight feet down to Bauer, to Baldwin Street. I'm sorry, the Bauer Hill Road Bridge, eight feet down, and you're ending up with two one-way streets. That would give you a four-lane road from this intersection where Cook School, McLaughlin Run and Bauer Hill Road meet over to the two one-way couple by extending Shady Avenue by 220 yards. If you, as a community and as a community leaders, and you have the competence to do this and the concern for the public to do it, but the three communities have got together and do something originally. If you, if you solve a regional problem, you'll get money.
Okay. Do you have anything new to add?
I just told you, everything I just told you is just new.
Thank you. Pat?
Thank you. Larry, this proposal, this plan was not a flood control plan that morphed admission creeds into a traffic flood. Chairman, your opening comments, you talked about flood. You'll revert back to the beginning of the, uh, the request to environmental planning and design. Which took four of the time. Okay. Thank you. Now, that explains why. The initial request to EPD was not to create a flood control plan. The initial request was to try and solve four problems. Traffic, flooding, sewage, and parking. In an area of our community that needed assistance, the Bauer Hill Road, Baldwin Street corridor, flooding was one piece of that. With the June 20th, 2018 flood, the project was hijacked and the focus is on flooding. What you see before you was not a plan to solve flooding. It doesn't address, the house is on McLaughlin. It is not a flood control plan in isolation. It was to look at Baldwin Street and Bauer Hill and try and improve that area. And I, I'm.
I don't remember parking being an issue. I thought, I thought it was to try to do a economic redevelopment project for an area that has habitual flooding and try to do some, some relief for it. How can we kill two birds with one stone? How can we rejuvenate an area and solve the flooding problem at the same time?
Uh, economic redevelopment program in an area that has, has some problems.
Right.
And yes, I.
As far as sewage, I don't remember that. I mean, we always have sewage problems.
It's the article, the sewage, but that was, we quickly threw that and said, whatever we do, whatever's done.
I must have missed that.
The sewage will get solved. You know, there. So. You're correct, by the way. The idea was to take a plan that Bridgeville agreed upon and then go to SPC, Allegheny County Economic Development, and try and get funding for a larger plan. Imagine if you snapped your fingers and there was no more flooding. Baldwin Street would not miraculously be, have economic development. It faces a series of problems. If you look from Painters Run Road to Washington Avenue, you see the difficulties. Again, snap your fingers, no flooding. You still don't have development that's going to come into the Baldwin Street corridor because it doesn't, it doesn't have the access. It doesn't have all of the other amenities that you need to have good economic development.
So can I ask you, hold on one second. I'm just going to ask you a basic question. Economic development in Baldwin Street, it's a, what's a, does that make any sense?
Uh, exactly why the, exactly why the first step of it was acquire properties.
And do what?
Acquire properties so that you have green space. Now, the question.
So acquire properties, take them down, you rip the, and put it in the green space.
Oh, that's, and this is where the big debate is. Do you retain the hillside properties? Are you able to solve enough of the flooding problem?
I think that's what I see here and it's, you know, I understand that. Like I said, you can solve, I don't know if you can solve all the flooding issues with those buildings on Baldwin Street. You'll solve a significant piece by taking them.
Well, by taking the creek side. That was the clear, you know, was take the creek side.
So that's perceived as being part of the economic development intent?
Yes. Well, one of the ideas was you've got green space, but perhaps we could put a little bit more parking in the green space so that the buildings in the hillside, on the hillside of what was Baldwin Street, could have someplace for their customers to park. Now, EPD's solution was to take the hillside properties as well, then raise them. Then raise them on stilts and put parking underneath the buildings. That part of the plan, I don't know has much traction. I certainly don't, don't buy into that part of the plan. I don't know about.
But that part of the plan was so far down the road anyway that it, you know, that was.
Exactly. Best as.
If we got to that part of the plan, we were like, yeah, that, we've already had $20 million of it.
We're so far into it. $20 million and 30 years.
People are buying property, you're building whatever you're wanting.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I, I strongly agree with what Larry Duncan said. You know, this is a concept. If you approve it, and if you approve it, you can send it to funding sources and try and get some buy-in. It at least says that the borough wants to do something about Baldwin Street and Bauer Hill. So thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Anybody else?
May I say something, please?
Please stand up and identify yourself.
Jason. I live on Maple Street. Uh, get flooded. I call it river life, which, you know, you get flooded, it's clean up, but they put a wall, I don't know if you, or, uh, any of you have heard of, they replaced the wall on Maple Street and they left the middle of it untouched. And we wanted, the residents want, that lived there, and there was only a few houses. We'd like it, the blocks there, four high, okay, instead of three, what they did. And then in front of my property, they did absolutely nothing. I mean, nothing. Okay, so there's a four-inch curb in front of my property for about 35 feet. And then about 75 feet, they put a new wall up, which serves no purpose whatsoever. It's not protecting nobody from flooding. And my personal opinion, I chose to live there, okay? And I'll live there till the day I die and have a family. But when they do a project, like an infrastructure project for flooding, that was half-assed done, okay? Excuse my friends. And if you're going to start on a, a project, get one part done, okay? That helps us out, okay? People on Baldwin Street, they're going to get flooded. I get flooded just as often as Baldwin Street, okay? I get it up through the source, it comes over the wall. I, we have video of it coming down the street before the creek even came over, okay? We literally have it on film and that. But I want to get it, Mike said that he's going to talk to the engineers and that because to, to us people that live there, that's a waste of money, okay? Now, if you look at the bridge, now, over across the creek, now, for, in order for them to get flooded over there, the water has to come as high as the bridge and it splits it. You understand?
Larry, you're talking about the new bridge?
Yes. I live down there, a gage four, quite four feet lower, three foot lower than McLaughlin. And I'd like to see something done because for one thing, there were no drawings for this project, okay? I know that for a fact. The company that did it, they, they did what they was told to do. The response I got from Gateway Engineer and a borough employee was, if the wheel's not broke, don't fix it, okay? And if you go down Maple Street, which I'd encourage you to, so you know exactly what I'm talking about, and you'd say, well, I don't know what wheel they're talking about because that wheel sure as hell is broken. And with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jason. Somebody else? Okay, Kevin?
Yeah, um, all good information. One question I had just listening. After the floods last year, is there a map, a document that shows all these items that we're talking about? Starting at the channel being cleaned out and the structures coming up so that, um, something I'd recommend, big picture is, this project here is in the middle.
Right.
You have water coming down from up above. You have significant restrictions down below. Um, so when we, when we meet next week, um, if that's not been created, we could spend an hour, start at the bottom and work our way up. I'd like to have it all in one document. And then, um, just take a look at it from, okay, uh, there's a bunch of grant information included in this document. Some of them are applicable for things downstream. Some of them would help for regional support. Some of them you can apply locally and figure out how to leverage your money the most we can, starting downstream. Because if we fix this problem in the middle, although it may look really nice, it may not last through the next storm because it can't get away from the area. Um, so at some point, the Gateway may have did this. They may have looked to see, how big should everything be? If they did, if we could get our hands on that and look at it, if they can, then we'll provide some guidance on how to think the next steps are there. Um, because it's just big picture planning, but if a culvert is 10 by 10 or 20 by 20 and it needs to be 30 by 40, um, that has a price tag to it. It's not in any of these. But there's potentially money out there that could be multi-ministerial, could be PENDU, could be SPC.
Isn't like, like, MS for, like, everybody has to have certain qualifications, requirements for that?
Yes.
I mean, doesn't some of this stuff, if we do for stormwater, doesn't that count as your requirements?
And there is, um, invest money for infrastructure improvements. And when you have flooding such as this, although at first it's very difficult, every year there's more money that comes out for things that previously never got funded. Um, there was all these slides last year. Well, this year people get funding for slides. They never got funding before. Um, so I think if you don't have that document for this committee, it would be good to list out, okay, there's all the problems and here's the stream, here's the size of it roughly, and, uh, it'll be a good starting point. And then start putting dollars into those things. If something's $10 million and it's impacted by four different municipalities, then let's figure out how, and then who we have to talk to. On the Army Corps thing downstream, that takes multi-ministerial.
Right.
Um, but I think keep going to that, um, well, that it needs cleaned and eventually it'll get cleaned. They did clean out the other channel. I went to multiple meetings over 10 years. They said they were never going to clean that out again. And when enough pressure got put on, next thing you know, there was three contracts come out and they cleaned out the main channel. So the back channel does need clean.
Yeah.
It's holding water back. Well, that probably is impacting that backwater into, um, the, the stream. So, um, I think it'd be good to have that document for your committee and, um, next week if we could, we could spend some time and do that.
Sounds good.
The information we're requesting already exists in terms of the openings of all five bridges.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so just to kind of wrap things up, we'll start looking at, the Planning Commission will start looking at short-term, midterm-type stuff. We'll leave this document as is for you guys to fester over for a while, or you're going to adopt it or?
We have to wait till the meeting. We can't do that now.
Well, I, I'm just, I'm looking for, just to recap.
Again, you know, there's nothing wrong with adopting it, I don't think. I mean, we'll have a discussion at the, at the meeting, at our meeting. Like I said, we can adopt it and it's, it shows that we have a plan to go after like SPC money and stuff like that.
Their own plan.
To Kevin's point.
Bob, you realize it doesn't have to, whether it's something you draw for that, it's a drawing.
It's, it's a, it's a concept for, for which to approach funding. So, okay, um, any other?
Yeah, I did want to make one suggestion. Um, I mean, this is a good discussion point, and I think you guys have these kinds of meetings in the last couple of years. If we could maybe start thinking about scheduling something quarterly or semi-annually just for this very purpose.
Perfect.
Just to keep this thing moving. Because the problem is, it's all good discussion here tonight. You know, follow up on it. It's just good discussion.
Yeah.
So, so just to clarify, you're, you're having, um, a public meeting with those guys joining us for us.
A joint meeting, yeah. A public meeting with Planning Commission and Councils would be at our meetings. Because I don't think our agenda's all in.
No.
Because we can't do it here. Maybe just routinely do it on some frequency, quarterly or otherwise.
That would be reasonable for.
One, one last thing. Since the anniversary is next month, is there any intent or any ideas to providing information to the public so that we can actually go and say, this is what we're doing, this is what we're planning for the time being? I mean, it doesn't have to be that we're going to have Baldwin Street fixed in 30 years, $30 million. But just an idea that, that, you know, we've applied for grants for the area behind Dairy Delight or the trash rack is going in and the ballpark is getting lowered, that sort of thing. I mean, because I hear it all the time, you know, what's going on? And it's on social media all the time too, so.
You know, it's about, you know, the borough, uh, has some sort of communication plan, I presume, for doing this kind of thing.
That's something, yeah, that's, I mean, we, we know that we, I mean, we need to communicate better. Um, and that's something that we are working to support.
I mean, especially with the one year coming up.
Yep. It's simple, just a nice recap of what's this tonight. Makes a very good press release to, we could call these the things that are done. Any other?
There is no doubt about it, Mr. Chairman, that the 10-year, 12-year plan would be the right one to do and concentrate on it. Definitely heard from all of us, plus the, the council and everything. Concentrate on, on a flood priority. And if your project concentrates on a flood, all those other mechanisms that come by themselves, they have to be tied. Let's face it. They just come by. I think that's what we should do. And we don't need, in my opinion, we don't need to spend that $40,000 waiting and advising. We have enough calories here. We have a celebration, we have an area, and tonight we can get together and shorten this plan to, and to 12-year and put them to work. And, and as I said, our priority got to be flood. And then again, I don't want to repeat myself. With that, everything else comes with it. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, um, and for the discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
Quick observation, if it's possible, can our agenda be amended so that the visitors and public comment section is moved to right before adoption minutes? So when you have citizens here who wanted to talk about an application before us, we could hear them before we actually come to that agenda. Versus having always public interject into our meeting and it just goes for free for all. I think if there was structures that this, they had the opportunity to talk before considerations, that's going to move a lot faster. So it's just, I'd recommend moving that if we, if other people agree.
It was their way somehow, I don't know.
It's hard, but you got to live with the time. Because the problem is that that can get out of control and you could be here all night. I mean, if you could do it that way, then you just live with the time.
Yeah. Okay. Take that under advisement. Okay? Anything else? Take a motion to adjourn? Did a second? All the favor?